...with inclusion of the supplementary information on the yellow pages. Move by, Counselor Parkinson and E... Thank you. We're in committee of the whole, so we actually don't need a second. Yes. So, any questions, comments about the agenda? All those in favor? Pose, motions carried. Okay, first item up, item three is Wild Wise Sook and Ms. Debbie Reed. So, welcome, Ms. Reed. I just need you to press the red or the gray button on the microphone.
Testing. Okay, thanks a lot for having me here today, and I'm pleased and happy to announce the Wild Wise Sook Program. Wild Wise Sook is a program created and delivered with the goal of reducing human wildlife conflicts through education, cooperation, and active management initiatives in the community, keeping wildlife wild and our community safe. I'm used to having someone do that. Wild Wise Sook was developed to service the needs of the municipality of Sook. We've learned a program can educate the community as to how to live responsibly with wildlife. We can drastically reduce the conflicts and can reduce the number of bears that have to be destroyed because of this conflict. We'd like to introduce our working group, Transition Sook, Sook Youth Council, Edward Mill's Community School Society, Conservation Services, the District of Sook, Royal Canadian Mounted Police, the RCMP, Sook Regional Chamber of Commerce, and the Sook Region Food Chi, and Zero Waste. So, this is our working group that will be helping us with this program. What's the plan for 2015? Our goal is education. We will do presentation, market booths, special events, education in schools, attractive audits, pamphlets and signs, visit problem areas, door-to-door campaigns, garbage tagging campaigns, work with other community groups, and support our community. Our general broaster wildlife conflicts is to educate people in communities to look at, is there something that is bringing the wildlife into my living space? These numbers indicate that the District of Sook is a hotspot for bear conflict. In 2013, in the municipality of Sook, we had 441 calls to conservation office from the District of Sook. 16 bears were destroyed in 2013. Through the educational program, which I've been running since about four years, 2012, we have seen lots of reductions in these numbers, and in 2014, we were down to 278 calls and only four bears being destroyed, so proving that the education has been working in our community. Working directly with the conservation officers, we are able to identify hotspots and problem areas, meet with the people directly who have problems, and understand problems in the community, and have accurate statistics. Without leaving today, I always have to remind us of our attractions in the community and what attracts these bears to us, which include garbage, barbecues, bird feeders, pet food, fruit trees, compost, and our basic "don't feed wild animals." Sometimes in Sook, we find that people, you know, aren't obeying those kind of rules, and they are feeding wildlife. And as you can see, we've got some deer in the background there by the red truck, and I've blown it up, and you can see some wonderful strawberries. So, this is the kind of volume that we're seeing in the neighborhoods of people feeding wildlife. No matter how many signs, et cetera, we put up in different communities throughout, I guess we could say, the world, people still have a tendency to feed wildlife. What are the impacts to a community of feeding wildlife? More vehicle collisions, public safety, pet conflicts, fecal matter, disease transmission, damages to gardens, loss to the local food production movement and industry. Feeding wild animals attracts larger wild animals, like cougars and wolves. Supplementing natural food supply can trigger an increase in overpopulation, hence what we've seen in the Oak Bay area. Attracts pets, unnatural foods, giving wild animals unnatural food sources can be very harmful to those animals, and, you know, more disease, et cetera. And then, there's many costs to the municipality when this gets out of hand. What is a bylaw? And I wanted to talk about bylaws, because I've done some research on bylaws and what other communities in the province have, you know, found. And most people are saying that the bylaw in itself is a rule established by a community to regulate itself. And we have bylaws to advise and guide our citizens of what is right and wrong behavior within our community. Bylaws are created to address issues and concerns, protect the environment, private and public property, and ensure public health, and to maintain orderly appearance in the community. Bylaws are a necessary part of any successful human life conflict management plan. Education and voluntary compliance are rarely enough to encourage everyone in the community to effectively manage potential wildlife attraction. They are also important to help people understand what the rules are and why they exist. So, unfortunately, in our communities and lives, rules are very important, and bylaws provide that for us. And most communities that have various amounts of bylaws will report back that not often are they having to, you know, give out fines except for bylaw, but the bylaw does inform the citizens of the community what the rules are. So, when people know what the rules are, most of the time, people don't break them. I have a letter here that was presented to council from the conservation officer to Elaine Ellinger, and this note was from Peter Pauls. And I've highlighted a few things that, to remind you, are frequent, ongoing conflict between nuisance wildlife and the general public, you know, has been seen in Sook. Intentional feeding of nuisance wildlife is a major contributing factor to almost all of the conflicts involving these species. In addition, feeding of wildlife also increases the livelihood of conflict with potentially dangerous predatory species of wildlife. As we discussed, cougars and bears and wolves, et cetera, are attracted to these areas. The feeding of these species increases their population beyond the carrying capacity of the environment. Artificially high population of these habitated species then spill over to neighboring properties, creating conflict within neighborhoods who bear no responsibility from the creation of the problem. Usually, these habitated animals have lost both the ability to forage for themselves naturally and the fear of humans. The result is frustrated and aggravated citizens complaining of local government, complaining to local government and CEOs. As these species are natural prey for cougars, their high density in rural areas such as Sook can also draw a young cougar looking for easy source of prey. And then, again, they draw in the bears, because the bears come to feed on the food or feed on the nuisance wildlife. The CEO supports the information of a local government bylaw that protects the... restricts the feeding of wildlife in our community. So, I suggest we support the proposed bylaw prohibiting the feeding of nuisance wildlife. And Wild Wise Sook strives to learn and share about how we can reduce human wildlife conflicts in all of our day-to-day activities. We must all think about how we live, work, play, and grow in respect to wildlife. Wild Wise Sook is an educational program for Sook, but education by itself is sometimes not enough. Bylaw helps people to understand what the rules are and why they exist. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Reed, for the presentation and for the work that you're doing in the community. A couple of questions that I have is just since the organic or the kitchen scrap program has been implemented by the CRD, and it may be a bit early to know this, so I'd kind of like to know, get some feedback from your group over time in terms of what you are hearing or what residents may be experiencing in the community with this, because the kitchen scraps have an extremely strong smell and odor to them. I have seen various things on social media, like a picture of a bear carrying or leave last year with a digester cone in his mouth that he had pulled out and then ripped apart, and I've heard of that happening, or different containers being knocked over and open. And I haven't heard much this year, but I wonder if that's because the bears are still closer to their dens and with the warmer weather, is there more natural food sources available? And are we going to see this increase? So, I'd just like to know if you have any comments on that? And also, just as it... as we go ahead with this and as more, maybe as more residents participate or... and different service providers provide different totes for collection, so is one kind of tote better attracting more than the other? Those sorts of things would be helpful to know.
Okay, so I have looked a lot into the kitchen scrap program throughout these coming months or past months, because this is something new that will be coming into the community, and I certainly have a concern. I have spoken to conservation in other communities, as well as the person from the CRD office who is running that kitchen scrap educational program. At this point, our bears have not erupted into our community as of yet, and we've had one call. And usually, like you say, you know, last year we had 278, so those calls haven't come in. Previous years, we've had over 500. So, usually, we don't start getting calls till mid-May, end of May, and because we had some warm weather, we were expecting them sooner. But I'm feeling it in my bones that they're coming on the tip. I spoke with the kitchen scrap lady who does the educational program, and I think something's very important, and I do agree with this, is that this type of garbage has always been in our garbage bags and on our streets in the past, and now we're just separating it into these bins. So, I think the education behind how to handle these bins is very important, you know, keeping them clean, putting them out the day of collection, not leaving them on our back steps. You know, I have gone to our waste collectors and had a look at their containers, and they're not bear-proof, and I have discussed this with them, and, you know, some of them are hot pink, and so they are quite attractive and noticeable. But I think that, you know, educating our community certainly to not, you know, leave these things outside is going to help us. And, you know, we can only hope that, you know, that one bear doesn't get one container, because bears do recognize shapes, and once they recognize that they can get food out of that certain container and the way it looks, it's going to be a problem for us. The other thing is, in speaking with the waste management companies in Sook, we've come up with a few solutions, and one of them is a sticker campaign. We're working with the waste management companies. I would like to put stickers on every single one of those kitchen scrap programs that says that this container should not be left outside and that the container should be put out on garbage day and let people know that it is not a bear-proof container. And I think having that right on the kitchen scrap containers would be useful, as well as on our blue bucket garbage cans that are left out. I think that message being in everybody's home certainly would help our situation. Looking at other communities, have they seen an increase in the kitchen scrap with bear calls? And I'm... my reports are saying not a big increase. This garbage has been on the streets and in people's yards, in a green garbage bag or a bucket, and it is still the same garbage, and they haven't noticed a huge, you know, rash of bears running in the community to get kitchen scraps. If those scraps are put in there properly, and a lot of people are using the Bow Cash, I'm not sure if you guys have heard of that, it's a kind of increases the ability for that compost to ferment, they're finding that it's not that tasteful, that kitchen scrap is not that tasteful, and the bears so much are not attracted to it. I think this is going to be a learning year for us when it comes to the kitchen scrap program. I do have plans to be working with the CRD educational program and in conjunction, putting on some, you know, seminars here in Sook, maybe, you know, some video night at the school, and really getting into proper composting, how deep to bury that composter, and how to handle the new program that we have. I think it's essential that our community is educated about this, and I personally think we can handle it. I think it's going to be a learning experience and just something else we'll work on.
I do agree that the garbage has always been, the scraps have always been in the garbage. I think, just from my own experience, because it's all just the kitchen scraps together, the smell is so much more pungent.
Yes, that's why the botash is a good idea.
Yeah, and then the bag itself is a compostable bag that it's in, and even the one in the kitchen tote is in a little bag, but it starts to decompose quite quickly, as opposed to the bigger, stronger, heavy-duty bag, which kind of seals everything up. So, that's why, just with the bear's nose being so strong, that it would actually smell this more so than before.
Well, we have to understand, too, that the bear... Most bears have recognized that green garbage bag as being a food source. So, now, even without that garbage bag smelling, you know, a bear is going to want to go in there and say, "Well, here's a green garbage bag, there's got to be something in there for me." So, you know, what our goal is, is to keep these containers clean and not put them outside. Our collection people are pretty quick on picking up garbage early in the morning, and they're saying that, you know, they're diligent in doing that on a regular day, at a regular time, and people know what these times are. And so, again, very back to the education, and, you know, hopefully, we get some good funding for our sticker program, and we can start sticker-ing up these garbage cans in Sook, because the bear-proof container idea is a huge cost to our garbage collectors.
Sure it is.
And, you know, I hate to put that responsibility on anybody. And looking at most communities, they're saying, "You know what? These little containers, bear-proof, aren't all that readily available yet. These are new programs." So, that's where we're standing with it.
Okay. Also, in terms of the call volume to number of bears destroyed, is there any correlation? I just wonder if people are of the opinion that if I call, a bear is going to be destroyed, so just don't call.
Well, we are encouraging people to call. This way, we know where the bears are, and we're able to go and speak to people in those communities. I just had an article in the Sook Mirror, in The Voice, in four of the... Forgive me for forgetting all the names, but I've done a media on what we're doing in Sook and our new program, and that it is community-oriented. And we are really letting people know that it's important to call the 1-800-WILD line, and basically, that's going to let us know where the bears are and give us the opportunity to go and meet with those neighborhoods. We're also planning a sign campaign, which is going to be a nice little yellow flag sign, about so high with kind of a little flag on it. And then, every time we get a call, we're going to go to that neighborhood, and we're going to put these flag signs out that says, you know, "Bear sighting reported, you know, manage your attractants." So, everybody in that community will know that there's a bear there, and they should manage their attractions. These... This way of handling our bear calls has been very successful in many, many communities, and I think the participation of our residents is very important.
Questions from counselors. Counselor Parkinson, then Pearson.
Thank you, Debbie. I'd just like to say that I will no longer be sitting on your committee, that Counselor Loggins is going to be the liaison to it.
All right, Brenda, well, sorry to have missed you.
But that's okay.
We enjoy having Ebony on our team, and if you ever want to pop in, we would certainly welcome you.
Yes, and that I probably will do. And I was just curious about... I was going to ask about the compost, but Maya did, so about bird feeders.
Well, bird feeders are something that we say attracts bears, and birds don't need to be fed in the summer, because they have plenty of food that is available for them. So, when I see a bird feeder, I always tell people, "Put your bird feeder away and put it out when the bears are sleeping," because I know people love to see their birds. The thing about bird feeders is the bears get very used to the shape of the feeder. Not sure if one of my... in one of my slides here, if I did include this picture, but bears will go to great lengths to get that bird feeder. On the wa... there he is. So, you know, bird feeders aren't attractive, and, you know, I've got pictures of bears three, four stories up. I've got, you know, problems with bears ripping off roofs trying to get to a little bird feeder and not there's even any bird seed in it, it's the fact that they have become accustomed to the shape. So, yes, bird feeders, I... when I meet with people or discuss our attractions, I always bring up the fact that bird feeders are included in that.
And so are fruit trees.
Yes, well, fruit trees are an attraction, but how do we manage fruit trees? We all have fruit trees in our yards, and so the way to manage fruit trees is to pick the fruit when it's ripe and not let it fall on the ground. The bear isn't smelling that ripe fruit, he's certainly not going to be there coming to eat it. But people let the fruit ripen, and it falls on the ground, and then the bear has a good whiff of that wonderfully sweet rotting fruit, and then they're in the fruit tree making a big mess. In Sook, I've had a lot of success with, you know, people picking their fruit and the bear going away, because bears are lazy, you know? They're not really happy to climb that tree unless they really have to. So, when you don't have that nice shiny fruit there, the bear doesn't want to go there. And we're hoping to work with Fuji and their picking program so we can work together in combination to get that fruit picked, because sometimes people have fruit trees and they don't want the fruit, or maybe are unable to at some point to be able to pick the fruit. So, you know, these are things that we have in our community. We don't... we certainly don't want to say, "Oh, we're not going to have barbecues, and we're not going to have garbage, and we're not going to compost, and we're not going to do things." Our goal with Wild Wise Sook is to coexist. And these... this program and the way it has presented itself is very successful in many communities. And like you say, education is the key, but certainly, having some rules in place just balances out the equation, because we can talk to, you know, many, many people, and some are, you know... Most people are very interested and comply with what they... Once they learn what's happening, but we always have those that don't, and that's when our bylaws come in to say, "Well, you know, it's against our bylaw." I think bylaws, too, when people move into the community, they understand, you know, these are our rules, and this is what's happening here. So many new people will come into the community, and they don't even know we have bears here. They're like, "What? We have bears." So, you know, these sort of things help out.
Right, so when we're looking at putting in a bylaw not to feed animals, do we put in all the six items that are up there? Or do we just do it like you were showing, the feeding of animals with dropping out strawberries in a pile or putting out...
Intentionally, yes. Now, I could represent you with some other communities that have put bylaws in place to handle these types of situations. And so, they will say in their bylaws that, you know, garbage cannot be left out the night before garbage day, and that barbecues must be kept clean, and they will word it, or it is worded, to represent, you know, this, right? But I believe that to be different. I think the bylaw that we're speaking on today is certainly having to deal with intentional. Some people in our communities are intentionally feeding wildlife, and they truly believe that they're doing the best thing for those... that wildlife. And so, they don't feel that they're doing anything wrong. And so, when you're trying to explain an educational program to them, they don't see the rule, right? They don't see that there's a rule there. So, if we're interested in doing something like this, I think that's not what we should be wording today. But, you know, it's up to you guys, your council.
Thank you.
Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Ms. Reed, for your presentation. I'm just kind of trying to look it up on the Ministry of Environment here to see what the actual fines are in the province for feeding wildlife. And it says, like, the Wildlife Act that's been amended in 2008 has substantially been improved.
Yes.
So, it feels like to me that... This feels like a piece of downloading onto the municipalities. When there's actual Wildlife Control Act...
Yes, let me speak to you about, because I know exactly what you're saying.
Yes, I'm kind of... I'm more inclined to think that those fines would be better and the enforcement would be better than the municipality.
No, that's a provincial issue. And when we get into provincial laws, that's put up before our provincial courts. And what happens when we have somebody intentionally feeding wildlife? Our conservation officer would have to be on sight when that bear was attacking that deer, because that deer was eating that food, or when that cougar came, or when that, you know, wolf came to eat that food. So, the only enforcement bylaw, and the way that that bylaw is written, is that conservation officer has to have so much proof to take it to the provincial court. So, as a municipality, Conservation Services is, you know, supporting municipal bylaws, because their side of it is very difficult for them to take this to a provincial court. They have to have so much evidence. And, you know, speaking with Conservation Services here in the CRD, they're saying out of 50 cases, maybe three of them will actually... They will have enough evidence to take it to court. So, it's not something... And the way that bylaw is worded, it does not address intentional feeding. So, it's not the same thing. And there is nothing in the conservation's bylaws that has anything to do with intentional feeding or the attraction bylaws. So, they can't help us.
Can't help us.
No, and I'm, you know, I've been working with them very closely, and, you know, Peter and I sat outside one residence for about a day and a half waiting for animals to show up, but we weren't able to do anything about it.
It just seems... it just feels counterintuitive to me that we have a Wildlife Act, and then we're trying to, you know, make it better. And I appreciate it, like, I have no problem supporting, you know, a bylaw of "Don't feed animals, wild animals" in the district. So, it's just... it seems that I'm trying to go through this, and there's a lot of hoopla, and, you know...
It's provincial, it's a provincial law, and, you know, if you go through any law that's coming from a province... If you go through any law going through the province, you'll find the same stuff. It'll take you a week to understand it, and the Wildlife Act certainly is the same. It's very detailed, because it is provincial law, so...
Hence, the difficulty in us putting a bylaw in place that is easy to enforce.
Yes, we did send you an example of the Oak Bay bylaw, and, you know, we felt that that was well-written, as well as well-researched. I mean, they've got some big problems there, as you know, and I know they've spent a lot of time putting that together. And, you know, certainly, each bylaw should be, you know, geared to the specific community concerns, but there are many, many communities in the province of British Columbia that have municipal bylaws about feeding wild animals, and most of them are fairly close to being the same.
Thank you.
Anything else from members of council or committee? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your presentation. Okay, so we'll get to the... to that particular section of animal control bylaw a little bit later. We have a staff recommendation that will follow. But next up, we have the SAFARS, the Victoria Pet Food Bank and Feral Cat Rehabilitation Society. Ms. Margarita Domeningas. You'll need to come forward, please, and turn on your microphone.
Is the camera working? What that means? It's not working.
Our tech department has it working. It has been recorded, but depending on people's feed and how well the internet connection's going, the live feed may or may not be running, but it's working. It's been recording for quite a while now.
Wait a minute, I have to find my paper here. My first question is... We did, first of all, we did not ask for a service contract. That is says there, we never asked for a service contract. The second, we have some questions before I provide my statement. According to the CRD facts, when they have animal bylaw officers, they only trap 14 animals, 14 cats. Now that they don't have animal bylaw officers, they only have six officers for the entire CRD, do you think so that they are going to be doing a good job?
Well, council has renewed the contract, so counts... This council has reviewed it, and I'm sure they've done so with confidence.
No, I know that the council is renewing, but it does not answer my question. This is your part, council is renewing the contract, but if we...
Council's renewed the contract based on past performance, and we'll review it again next year.
14 cats?
We didn't get into specifics on the number of cats. We looked at the service agreement or our agreement contract with the CRD, and we renewed it.
My question is, are you sure that they are going to be doing the job, that they are going to come here and trap the cats and pick up the cats and taking it to the pound, or you are going to have to hire another officer?
We have no intention... Ms. Domeningas, I'm answering your question, so please let me answer it. We will assess whether it's a good or bad job at the end of the contract. Council has confidence in the service that they're providing, so we've left it at that.
Which I hear you're saying that you're only going to pay the $76,000 or $77,000 this year?
There is no intent to increase the number of...
Bylaw officers?
Of bylaw officers by this council.
Okay, answer to that, then. Who is going to be checking in all these bylaws? What officer is going to be checking? Is the CRD is going to be checking?
Why don't you go through all your questions, and then I'll answer them together?
That is, I'm asking, except to those, as I have it written here.
Okay, go ahead, ask your questions, and then I'll answer them all.
Okay. Who is the bylaw officer that is going to be checking in all these new bylaws regarding animals? When somebody calls that an animal is in the backyard or somebody has to trap an animal, who is going to answer to all those calls? Is the CRD going to be answering to all the calls? Yes?
Your next question? Go through all your questions, and then I'll answer them at once, and you can give your statement, okay?
Those are the questions. Those are the questions.
Those are all your questions?
Yes.
Our staff will work with the CRD, and will address these animal complaints, go to the CRD Animal Control. And our staff will work with the CRD on that. And I'm confident with the staff that we have, and they've done a good job. So, council renewed the contract, and that's really all I'm going to say about it.
Okay, perfect, to answer my question. Now.
I've answered your question.
All right?
I've answered your question, you're just not willing to accept the answer.
No, no, I accepted, that's okay. Yeah, that's accepted, that's okay. I just needed the answer.
Okay.
Uh, now, the quest, my, my, my statement here is, this is, I think so that this bylaws, first of all, sorry, I have another question. What is going to happen with all the cats? When you're passing four cats in a household? We live, we don't live in Oak Bay, we live in a rural area. We have five acres of land, three acres of land. People need cats, because they need rats, they have rats, and even in the houses. You, I have houses, I know houses that their pack was wrapped. Okay, now you're going to eliminate all the cats. How are you going to, all the cats that person has? I know people, because we have a pet food bank, I go to homes, we have people that have six cats, seven cats. What is going to happen with those cats? Are going, what is people going to do with all those cats now? Because if you're going to pass a bylaw of four cats, with not giving any time for people to solve, or any years, instead of just saying, well, we are going to, thinking perhaps in the future, passing this bylaw, or everything is going to abide by a grandfather rule, for example.
Well, Ms. Domeningas, our bylaw officer will not be going door-to-door inspecting each house to see how many cats there are.
Okay, means if somebody goes to a house, and the person has more than four cats, the person is going to receive a ticket?
It's a complaint-driven problem, so if a person has fourteen cats that are not being well-looked after, I'm certain that our staff will be looking with, and working with other resources to.
Right after the bylaw is done?
Can you please stop interrupting me?
Sorry, yeah.
This has been in place since our zoning bylaw was adopted. The animal control bylaw that we're looking at here is not anything new. This has been adopted now for previous zoning bylaws. And I have not heard of anyone who has had their cats taken because a bylaw officer showed up at their door unexpectedly, investigating their house for cats. Okay, next question, or what is, may I ask what your presentation, can you move on to your presentation, please?
Okay, yes, I want to say that what we need in Suk, really, is spay and neuter clinics. That's what we need. You want really to tackle the problem of the cats? That is a good part. It's not just penalizing an elder person that is eighty years old, or a single mom that has several animals, that the animals are going to be taken away, and are going to be sent into Elk Lake, a person doesn't have a hundred dollars to take those animals from the pound. This is, I mean, my opinion, this bylaw, if we're a town like ours, rural town like ours, in this moment of recession, is brutal, is cruel, because people don't have money in this moment. We are doing all that we can. And you're talking about getting money for education. We have been providing education, all the small groups, we have been giving, and giving, and giving, and we have received nothing from you. You know, for the cats, the animals have received nothing. Now you come, and you're going to be taxing people. It's, you're just experimenting to see if the seventy-six thousand dollars that you're paying this year is going to work next year. But if it doesn't work, you're going to have to hire another employee just to tackle this problem. I think so that it just, in my opinion, no, not, and a lot of people think like me. This is, you're new, you come, you give a lot of bylaws, the people cannot take it, the poor, the, the people are poor. People, people don't, cannot go to Elk Lake. You need to find a solution here. You need to, we have, we don't ask money, we just ask to lease us a piece of land. We don't even want to. You give, you gave us a piece of land for the horse pitch, and you're going to pay twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to build it. But the cats, perhaps, I, I don't know. The other thing is, that if you're just naming domesticated cats, how do you know that is domesticated? Did you, how can a person know that the cat that goes in the person's yard is domesticated, or is stray? Because the strays are domesticated too. They, they are, now, if you name domesticated, and you leave the strays and the ferrets outside, means that they don't, the, the, the feral cats and the stray cats, it fall under default, it fall under Wildlife, Wildlife Act. By the Wildlife Act, under the alternative acceptable solutions to kill an animal, they have the right to cool it with a hawk, take the cat, take it to Wildarc, or to any other rehabilitation center. This is the reality of what is happening with the rabbits. The rabbits are feral, they, they, there is a domesticated animal called feral rabbit, and they cool the rabbits in that way. And well, Wildarc spends a lot of money in buying frozen animals to feed the raptors. Well, we are seeing that this kind of bylaw is extremely dangerous, and all pains for the people is, we are not ready for this yet. This is my opinion, and I really beg you to, people are asking in Suk, I, people knocking my door, at eleven o'clock at night to hand in two dogs for me, and people are calling me all the time. People don't have where to take the animals. Would you be taking the animals to the pound in Elk Lake and picking them up? Uh, we live too far away. This is a rural town, it's not, I understand you want to consider like a big town, but we are not a big town. We need something here, and we have the petition there, the petition is proven, and people keep talking, people, I would request, like, their mapping, their, how was the fine arts mapping? Well, it was a survey, a survey done. Why don't you put a survey outside, to see what people think? To see if people would like, really, uh, have an animal shelter here. I don't deal with dogs. I offer you to receive dogs during the night, and, and the CRD can pick it up the next day, or it can be another group working with dogs. But I have my hands full with the cats, I cannot do that. But I, I am doing everything I can, I'm just killing myself, I don't, you know, I never ask you for money, I never ask you for anything. But I'm, this is for the people. Thank you very much.
Any questions from council? Okay, just a few things, Ms. Domeningas, is that we're aware of your petition. Um, council also put forward a referendum question on, uh, community facilities for members of the community, and that was passed by referendum, so we have done an ask, and that is what, one of our priorities of this council. Uh, this council will not be leasing a piece of land to your society, and has not made putting together an animal facility a priority. So we appreciate that you bring this forward, but it is not a priority of this council. And we will consider your input as we deliberate on the next item of our agenda. And this committee makes recommendations to council, so that will come forward at a later date to council.
Okay, because you are answering for council now, instead of a committee, if you cannot.
I'm not answering, Ms. Domeningas, I haven't recognized you at the microphone. This is a committee of the whole meeting, so the committee here will make recommendations that will come forward. The committee may decide not to amend the bylaw, or the committee might decide to make some. Those will go forward to a later council date, and, and then council will deliberate at that time.
Okay, because when we have, we presented the letter, we didn't present the letter that is in the agenda today for this meeting.
We did receive your other letter, and, Ms. Domeningas?
Yes.
We did receive your letter, and council's action at that time was to receive and file it, and there was no further debate on the matter. We appreciate your efforts, but that's where this council is at at this time.
Your coldness.
Thank you. Okay, so our next piece then is the Animal Regulation bylaw, so I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Howie.
Uh, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, but I'm going to actually turn it over to Ms. Sprinkling. Uh, Ms. Sprinkling and Ms. Mills produced the various options for council to consider. All I'll say is that this came out of previous meetings, talking about animal control, about feeding of, of wild animals, and what we should be doing about exotic animals. So the reports were divided into those three, and much like the way, uh, previous council and its committee handled the subdivision bylaw. Uh, we thought the same kind of process would apply, just go through each of those. And if you need more information, refer back, if you want to recommend something to council, do that.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Sprinkling.
Committee and, and your worship, um, this report was prepared jointly with Medea Mills, the bylaw enforcement officer, with considerable research of legislation and other municipalities, their bylaws, so a lot of time has gone into reviewing what other municipalities have been doing. Consequently, we've put together some proposed amendments that council could consider on the three main levels of this bylaw that were brought forward. One was the feeding of wildlife, the next was, um, the regulation of wild and exotic animals, and the final is the control of, of cats. In the, in the package, it's a little convoluted, but the proposed amendments to bylaw three ninety-two start at page sixty-nine. But the analysis of each of the proposed amendments start on page eighty-seven, if that's a help for council.
Ms. Sprinkling, the only thing is that through the grandicus, the page numbers aren't there. So in this case, to follow along, like it's broken down, the staff report analysis, and then it's A, B, C, D?
Correct.
So to go to the A, B, C, D parts?
As, is the feeding of wildlife.
Okay, so that's our first piece then? Okay.
And to help, I've created a little PowerPoint of the proposed amendments. So as to feeding wildlife, thank you again to Debbie Reed to give all the, the background that we needed in terms of the Wild Wise Program, and what they're doing. And she touched on what other municipalities are doing in the province, that most of them do have some form of addressing some, some way prohibiting wildlife. In review of the local municipalities, most municipalities do have a prohibit, prohibit feeding of wildlife in their communities, and that's Esquimalt, Sanich, North Sanich, Sydney, Central Sanich, View Royal, and Victoria and Colwood. Langford does not, and I did go up island to Nanaimo, and they do not have that prohibition. So, um, and carefully looking through bylaws, as, as Ms. Reed said, that most bylaws in the province of B.C. are very similar as to feeding of wildlife. So, uh, to amend our bylaw, we're looking at defining wildlife as is defined in the Provincial Wildlife Act. And that's pretty well any wild animal in B.C. that's native to B.C. And so we would add that different definition. A council could also then go further with the feeding of wildlife, as, as was mentioned, that any intentional feeding of wildlife would be prohibited. So that wouldn't be, you know, you wouldn't see our enforcement officers going around and looking at apple trees and that. But the, through the education process, we would hope that people would look to monitoring their apple trees and, and other fruit trees. This bylaw amendment would not include anything to do with hunting and trapping, as is permitted under the Wildlife Act. Finally, there would be, in looking at other municipalities, the usual level of fine is, is around a hundred dollars for prohibiting feeding of wildlife, or actually feeding of wildlife. Is there any questions on that section?
So just a comment then, Ms. Sprinkling, so the intent, if we were to put this through, and if council adopted it, there would be an educational piece, um, you know, I'd just like to see our bylaw officer, you know, provide some sort of warning tickets and some information before just doing that.
It's really more like a bylaw compliance situation. Very rarely would you fine immediately, there would be an education process, and that's probably true of all of our bylaws.
Okay.
We strive for compliance rather than that, that final step of fining.
Any questions from members of the committee on this section in particular? Counselor Pearson? Get your microphone.
Can I, can we ask Ms. Reed?
Yeah, but can you?
It's all right if you.
Turn on your microphone, please.
I, I'd like to just sort of have you involved in the conversation. That word scares me, the intentional feeding, you know what I mean? And, and again, and that's going to be discretionary, right?
What do you, what do you define intentional feeding, sir?
Well, you, trust me, my neighbors cut down branches over here, and then they put them over here, right? But they're cleaning their property, but then they throw them over the fence, and like, and they're, and they're, they're known to be feeding deer, right?
Yes.
But I can see the argument coming, I'm cleaning my property, I'm planting my branches over there, you know what I mean, like it's just.
Well, intentional feeding would be, you know, giving an animal.
Human.
Human-type food sources intentionally, wouldn't, wouldn't you think?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if you're feeding a deer branches, I, I wouldn't consider that to be against a bylaw or intentionally feeding an animal, because that's natural food source, right?
Okay.
Um, so, that animal is probably going to eat those branches anyways, whether they're on the ground or on the tree, right? Do you, do you understand? It's, it's.
Well, it's, it, and the reason why I say that is, is because in the neighborhood I live in.
Yes.
It, it got really controversial that this family was feeding the deer.
Yes.
So it starts with cutting the branches, right? Then it starts with dropping off the hay for the cows, then they go over here, then they haul branches in, you know, so. So all of a sudden, it, it becomes different, and it is, they, it is, do you support this? I guess my, my opinion is, in this concept, I.
Yes, I, I do support it, because I will tell you that most people are very, um, positive towards the education that I've been offering to this community.
Right.
You know, very few people have opposed the education. They, they are very happy to know what is going on with wildlife in Suk, okay? It's, it's a concern of our community, and they're happy to want to know how to avoid conflict. Um, but we do have those that do not. And when you have a bylaw, as I said, it's not a bylaw that, you know, okay, we need a bylaw to enforce and put out fines and all this, we need rules, okay? And when we have rules in a community, people naturally abide by the rules. So for those people who say, I don't want to hear about, you know, this, and I don't want to deal with this, then we can say, well, you know, it is against our rules and regulations of this community. It is in our bylaw, that we as a community do not support this. For someone like your neighbor, it might just be a simple educational process on what's happening with those animals, and that might work, but in, in the case that it does not, um, you know, we couldn't possibly use the bylaw in, in a, in a way of saying, well, we don't support feeding wildlife in Suk. So, you know, whether or not it would be enforceable then, because of the word intentional, maybe not. But ninety-nine point nine of, percent of the time, when people understand the community does not support that, they do not continue.
Right. I, and you said it very well, it's just that we sit up here.
Yes.
And what you just said, the ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, it's that point one of a time, when we're sitting here listening about amending a bylaw, or it's not clear, or somebody has a hundred pictures of infraction, or whatever that comes up to us, right? It's, so, so I like to see a bylaw that's airtight. That's what I like. Like, so that I can say, okay, it's very clear, you're not allowed to feed the wildlife, right? I don't like the word, words that are ambiguous in there, or that there's discretion, or things like that. I like it to be clear. So, so that the public, because really, you're right, the public really generally follows the rules.
They love rules. We all love rules.
Or, or clear definition. It's just that when we're sitting here, and we're, you know, we're making recommendations as a council, to, to bylaw enforcement.
Well, Bonnie, when you were reviewing the most of the bylaws, and I'm going to ask Bonnie this question. When you were reviewing most of the bylaws, did you see the word intentionally used through the different bylaws?
Most of them were this format, um, probably word for word.
And using the word intentionally? No, food waste or other material is likely attracted to wildlife, so there is no word intentionally being used there.
Right.
So, um, and I refer to other communities, because I always like to see, you know, use as a backup all the work that everyone else has done, because, you know, people always do their background, and when you gather up all that, you know, obviously that's a tool for us to move forward, right? And so if they're using this wording, then we don't need to use the word intentional.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed.
Sorry, I didn't mean to take up so much time, but.
No problem.
Anything else, Counselor Pearson? And you see the, the wording that Ms. Sprinkling put in here, is number forty-four, or pardon me, fifty-four. Uh, is there anything that you would like added or changed to that?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable.
Counselor Parkinson?
It's fine.
You're fine, okay?
He's got it now, it's okay.
Okay, very good. Uh, so what I would like, perhaps, if we do this section by section, perhaps the committee can make a motion then to put this bylaw amendment through to council, council.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion then? Okay, all those in favor of it? Opposed, motions carried, thank you. Opposed, motions carried, thank you. Okay, so move on to the next piece, it's number B, or letter B, Regulation of Wild and Exotic Animals. Ms. Sprinkling?
As I said previously, we did a serious amount of research and looking at other municipalities. And what we discovered, that was when the Animal Regulation Bylaw was adopted, it was prior to the Controlled Alien Species Regulation enactment. So, consequently, we've reviewed things, and we feel that all our reference in the existing bylaw could be removed, that we could rely on the senior legislation of the province's Controlled Alien Species Regulation that sets out the permitting and requirements for exotic animals. As well, the Wildlife Act itself, it regulates wild animals, so there, there would be no ability to keep a bear or a cougar or anything like that as a pet in the province of B.C. So, it's all, it's, what we've done essentially is repeat what's in the provincial legislation. So, consequently, we've looked at the bylaw, and we would suggest that wild or exotic animal would be as defined in the Wildlife Act or Controlled Alien Species Regulation. Then we would, if council would wish to be stronger, repeating the regulations of the province, we could add a, a section that says, "No person shall keep or harbor any wild or exotic animal anywhere in the district except as permitted under the British Columbia Wildlife Act and Controlled Alien Species Regulation." And then we would suggest the removal of Schedule E, which listed all the, the different animals that were previously prohibited. And we would, we could keep the, the fines if council so wished, but it probably wouldn't be something that would actually have to be in place, because the province would have its own ability to, to fine. So, that's what we've discovered, and in particular, the, I think it's the gentleman, is it David? Yeah, that brought forward that the, the senior legislation was in place, and it permits certain snakes, certain lengths, and there's requirements also for, is it neutering? Or, or however they're managed under a permit. So, certainly, this is something that's probably beyond local government to manage.
Right. So, in this case, as those provincial, as the province adapts or changes things, and ours automatically? It's Mr. Spears?
Spire.
Spires, pardon me. You know, I rather, I know that this is likely the item that you're here for, and so, rather than just waiting for you to speak during the public input, I'm, is this sort of what you had sort of hoped for at our last meeting? Do you mind just maybe stepping up, just if you don't mind holding on your question, Counselor Pearson?
No problem. Okay. Yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping that you would adopt, is the provincial regulations. I mean, as I talked about when I was here the first time, there was a lot of research that went into that. There was participation from experts in the field, people that are quite prominent in breeding of snakes and, and other reptiles, and agreed that, you know, there are some that definitely need to be prohibited, some that need to be restricted. And so, yes, the provincial regulations are very well thought out and accepted amongst, you know, the reptile community. And, you know, that's what I think would be appropriate as well.
And that's where, do you then apply for a certain permit then?
Well, I can address that, you mentioned neutering or spaying. I don't know how you would actually do that with a reptile, I suppose you could. I actually watched surgery on a leopard gecko on YouTube, where there was impacted eggs, and they actually put the animal out with gas and performed surgery and did the sutures, and the animal survived. But in, in terms of like prohibitions and restrictions, they're on the really big snakes that I talked about, like your African rock pythons, reticulated pythons, and so on, the big snakes that one person could not handle. You do need special permits just to transport one. There are different levels of permits for that. The Dudenhyde Animal Hospital, I believe, has one, and they can house and transport one of these large animals. The goal of anyone in the reptile community is, you know, to have cooperation and education. It's a huge part of what we do, so that people understand that having one of these animals is not to be taken lightly. And that's why, you know, they're, they're best in a zoo, and even sometimes then, they're really not meant to be handled by one person that doesn't know what they're doing. So, you know, but the, the other animals certainly are. And so, that's why those regulations were agreed upon, and the reptile community is quite supportive of it. You know, in fact, there is the Reptile Expo this coming weekend in Sanich, which I invite you to attend. You know, I?
No thanks.
They're all behind glass, and they're all quite safe. But it's, just to address one quick thing about, someone asked me, you know, like, well, if these animals got out, you know, are they going to invade and kill? Well, probably not. And we talk about like wild animals versus domestic animals. All the animals that you're going to see at the expo are domesticated, just the same as all our dogs and cats are, because all the dogs and cats that we have in our communities, your Rhodesian ridgebacks, your, they're mutations. They're not what was normally in the wild, so they're domesticated. All the snakes that you're going to see at the expo, all the reptiles, they're domesticated, because they're not what you would see in the wild. If you saw a banana ball python, which you probably have great imagination going on right now, it's a bright yellow snake, and would probably get eaten by an owl, because it's not able to hide and, and do that kind of thing. So, I hear those arguments all the time about, you know, from people that don't understand, are afraid of them, and, and don't appreciate them. And I don't mind giving that education out. I was at the Pet Expo, April eleventh and twelfth, I should know that because of my birthday, and spent a tremendous amount of time just talking to people. My daughters were there, talking to people about these animals, and people were able to touch them for the very first time in their life. Check that off the bucket list. And so, education is a huge part of what we do. So, people do understand that. And just as a chihuahua isn't for everybody, neither is a snake. But, you know, as a society, we do have freedoms and rights and things like that, and, you know, what we choose is what we choose, as long as it's safe and, and doesn't pose any problems. Personally, I'm afraid of chihuahuas, I just, they scare me.
We're even.
All right. Counselor Pearson has a?
I have a chihuahua.
Did any, Counselor?
No one would ever guess that.
Did you have a question for Mr. Spires?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay.
Well, I have a question for, well, actually, it feels kind of good, because it feels like we're uploading to the province on this one, as opposed to getting downloaded, so that's kind of nice. So, the only thing I don't, I didn't understand was, so we're making it a little bit more robust within our district, we have a provincial regulation, and then we're adding a, a local fine? That kind of feels a little counterintuitive to me.
That would only, I only added those things because you may still wish that level of comfort, but it would be entirely up to you whether that clause was in the bylaw or not.
So, I would make a recommendation that we forward this back to council, I'll make the motion. But I would like to, I'd like to have a discussion around that fine piece, because it doesn't, it feels counterintuitive to me, because we have a, we have a provincial regulation, and we'd be doing something in, in concert. Okay, well, it goes to council for a discussion, right?
Okay, so, I guess, we don't need a second or, just Mr. Spires is standing, so, did you have anything for him specifically?
Actually, I want to thank you for educating us a little bit on, on the exotic animals. No, because you've, you've been here twice.
Yes.
And you have educated us a little bit on that, and, and I appreciate that, so thank you.
You're very welcome, that's what I love to do.
Thank you. Anyone else from council have a question for Mr. Spires? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight. Okay, so then, your motion then, Counselor Pearson, so under B three, the possible bylaws, there's items A, B, C, and D?
Yes.
Okay. And so, your, your comment then about the fees then?
Yeah, we can leave it in its entirety now, so we can have a discussion at council. Just, just my motion is to recommend it to?
Oh, sorry.
Is to recommend it to, that we, that I move it, that we move it to council?
Okay, all of those items, okay. Any further discussion on that motion then? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Okay, so the next one is C, Control of Cats. The public input is at the end, Ms. Dominguez? Go ahead, Ms. Sprinkling.
Could I have the next slide? Sorry, Dana, thank you. Your worship, this was, and committee, this was a, a, a research that we did in terms of concerns from a member of the public at the last meeting concerning the control of cats, that cat, cats were at large, so it's not otherwise. So, in reviewing other municipalities, it looks like most municipalities do not permit more than four or five cats in the, in a residence or a property, so, in individual property. So, Esquimalt, Sanich, Sydney, Central Sanich, View Royal, all have that regulation. Some of the municipalities go further to, to deal with diseased animals, and, and that's more of a control on cats at large. So, in reviewing things, we did, as, as the mayor mentioned, look at the Sioux zoning bylaw that already sets out that there be no more than four cats or dogs on a, on a property unless it is zoned appropriately, and that would be intensive agriculture and for the purpose of a kennel. So, that is already in place. But council could consider further control in a animal control bylaw, such that no person shall keep shelter or harbor more than four cats over the age of four months, which allows for litters of kittens, on any parcel of land in the district unless the parcel is zoned in such a manner as permitting a kennel or breeding facility. We did look at other legislation in other municipalities, and we kind of liked the next one as a support for people that have, are responsible with their cats. And that is to ensure that the cat has some sort of identification, so if it were lost or running at large, that it, the animal could be returned to the owner. And I know that that's what a, a dog license does, but we, we're not advocating licensing of cats for the municipality. So, and then, if you were looking to prohibit the excess cats on property, then there would be a, a fine of one hundred dollars for properties that have more than four cats. So, this is just something for count, the committee to consider, and that's?
That's it?
That's it.
So, at, at the moment, we don't have anything for cats? Is that correct?
The zoning by, zoning bylaw does.
The zoning bylaw does, but the animal control bylaw does not?
But nothing in, in the animal control.
Okay. And then in terms of, and then it's still complaint-driven, if there was an incident where there were twelve cats on a property?
Yes, yes.
Because that would be the only way that the bylaw?
That's correct.
Would even know that, that was the case.
And I should clarify that the animal control bylaw does deal with the general health and care of animals in general, so that would cover cats as well.
Right, okay. Counselor Parkinson?
We had a woman speak at one of the meetings about the cats running at large on her property and having a problem with the neighbor's cats. So, was, is this part of, how were we going to control or put in place something for animals being, cats being on other people's properties?
But in that case, that there is a, an opportunity for her to work with the bylaw officer through the CRD to have that problem addressed. So, she could choose to do that. Am I?
Your worship, the animal control bylaw right now allows for an animal control officer to seize and impound any animal unlawfully running at large, and that's what I meant by an animal includes a cat. So, that's already in the bylaw.
Yeah, so that's already in place, and so, it's up to her to, to, it's up to any landowner or owner to decide to do that, if they continually?
Right. And when she spoke, she said that she did that, that the cat went to the pound, the cat came back, the cat was back out?
Well, then you keep calling.
Okay. There's nothing in.
Right? I mean? So, any other comments or questions from council? I mean, at this point, I'm inclined to, you know, if I may suggest, just to leave our animal control as it is. The only downside to not doing anything with the, like, in items twenty-four, is then the zone, because the zoning bylaw covers the limitations on the cats and dogs. So, do you update this? And we're updating the bylaw, we're moving in that direction, so do we add in some language that then mirrors the zoning bylaw? Because one cannot go with the other. In terms of twenty-five, it just varies according to owner in terms of what they do. That would be, whether it's the, a collar or tag, the others have to be done through a vet. Often, that's done when an animal is spayed or neutered, you have those options. Counselor Parkinson?
So, I would recommend that we bring this forward to council, and for the two additions, and update the bylaw, so that it's the same.
So, you would like to see all the items then?
The twenty-four and twenty-five, yeah.
And then, or I guess, A, twenty-four, twenty-five, and B?
Mm-hmm. Yes, please.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? Okay. All those, no, the public input is after this section, we've already gone through that. So, all those in favor of the motion then? Okay, motion's carried, so we'll move on to the next piece, D.
The final is the request from the Safar's Victoria Pet Food Bank and Feral Cat Rehabilitation Society, that council consider amendment of the Sioux zoning bylaw to permit a cat rescue facility in all zones, B, providing property for a cat rescue facility, and C, providing a letter of support.
Okay, so, we have received a letter before. Well, the property for the cat rescue council has already not made that a priority, so that's not happening. The letter of support, we could look at putting in a current letter. And then, in terms of amending the zoning, we've done, not with cats, but with different entities about allowing a certain use in all zones. It sets a precedent, so in that case, different business owners or nonprofits have to come forward and go through a rezoning process if they have so parcel of land, and that's consistent with different businesses that have come forward and so forth. So, any comments from the committee? Counselor Pearson?
Well, an amendment to the zoning bylaw to permit a cat rescue facility in all zones. While I appreciate the idea and the intent, and I, I do appreciate Mrs. Dominguez coming here all the time over the last four years, our hands are tied a lot of times. We have to look at applications individually. If you have a piece of property, or you think it's a suitable piece of property, then I think the obligation is to bring it to council, and council will make that decision. I think you have support, if you can come up with the property. I know you keep asking us for property, we don't have it, and, and I, and I hope you get that picture. Well, just hold on a sec, because I want to, I want to capture my thought, is that if you find a piece of property, I hope that someone is doing their homework, and, and we can see it clear to, to, to amend the zoning. We may be able to look at fees or things like that as, as the district, but that's as far as we can go. To say that we're going to blanket zone everything in the District of Sioux to a cat rescue society, we can't do that, and I don't think in all good consciousness we can, we can do that. However, we can look at individual applications, each and every time. So, it's, it feels like the cart before the horse. You know? You know that council will support you if you come forward with a, with a, with a, with a proposal. You, you know, you, you've made some pretty harsh statements towards us and our staff lately, and you know what, I have never heard any harsh statements towards you. It means it's difficult to sit up here and listen to sometimes our staff being attacked or, or, or members of council being attacked. You have support here, our hands are tied sometimes, and you have to understand that. You come to us with a piece of property that's suitable, we'll give you that support for zoning, that, and that's, that's all I would say. I have no problem pushing this to zoning or to, to the council, but we can't blanket zone everything in Sook. That, that would be saying like Commercial Downtown Core would be suitable for a cat rescue society. Maybe it would, but you know what, we have that, we can answer the question before it gets asked. Providing property, we don't have that access to property. We have Parkland, which you mentioned earlier, that's not the same as a cat rescue society, and providing a letter of support, I have no issue with that whatsoever. Anyways, that's my comment.
Any other comments from council?
No.
Okay, so, would you like to make a motion, Councillor Pearson?
I'll make a motion that we direct the cat rescue portion of this excluding the zoning bylaw piece of it and the property to council for the consideration.
Okay, so it'll be item C?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wait, wait a minute, though.
Councillor Parkinson? Yep, discussion on the motion, so basically, if I'm clear on this, Councillor Pearson, yours is to move item C to council?
Yes.
Only, okay, Councillor Parkinson?
So, if I read correctly through the, through the minutes here or information, providing a letter of support, when I read in here, it wanted a letter of why we wouldn't give them land, so that really doesn't constitute a letter of support.
Well, what we see, and what I'm looking at is if you, if you go to that next page, there's a letter that Wendell, or past Wendell mayor, Wendell Millen, had written on July the 13th, and so he basi- it would basically be similar to that with the exception of in 2013, it refers to a grant that was granted, and so it's basically a letter of support for the society, um, the services that they do, then that we support their efforts to manage the number of cats and to support the society's petition to other levels of government for further funding assistance in addressing this serious issue. So it would be essentially that with the current date, current, um, council support and, and just some language that would address, so maybe we could refer back to that grant that was given. Councillor Pearson?
And, and, and intent, and I think that we could flesh it out at, at a regular council meeting, we're, we're pushing this towards council.
Yeah.
For their, for their, further discussion on it.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any, um, does that answer your question, Councillor Parkinson?
Kind of.
Kind of.
I'll, I'll find it in here and then bring it up at the meeting.
Okay, it's in that D section, like, um.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I thought I wrote down the number, but obviously not.
Okay, did you have another comment or question?
It's on page 104.
Is that where it is?
So it's the second last page in the package.
Yeah.
Well, I got the letter that Wendell wrote.
Yeah, that's the one that I was looking at.
No, I wasn't looking at that. There's a note somewhere in the readings, um, that said why we don't support them.
Oh, I see.
Or I read it wrong.
Okay, I may need you to see that, okay. Um, did you have another comment or question about the motion?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councillor Logan's, okay. All those in favor of the motion, opposed, motion's carried. So, okay, and then I think if we just go back to the analysis piece where there's the proposed amendments, um, to bylaw number 392, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Sprinkling, but basically where we see the strike throughs and the language changes, um, you've taken all of the suggested amendments and put them all through onto this bylaw, so, and I, and I believe we've gone with all the suggested amendments through the various items, so, no?
Your worship, there was some housekeeping amendments.
Oh, some housekeeping amendments in terms of, um, aggressive dog.
That's correct.
And being more defined as dangerous dog, the high watermark.
To remove that.
Yeah, some pieces on running at large, so there was a few, yeah, the housekeeping pieces. I just have a question about that, on page three where the running at large is. I guess this is where a dog is loose, but if somebody is actively seeking out their dog, I think it just depends on how far.
Every situation is.
Every situation is different.
Individually, certainly if someone has, has lost their dog and they're out looking, they're, they're, unless the animal has been picked up and taken to the pound, they would be given some time to find the animal, I would think, unless, it's mostly a complaint driven, of course, so, uh, animal control would have to receive a complaint that there was an animal at large.
Right, because you often see just different things on Facebook where someone has spotted the dog or, and someone's looking for it, have you seen this? So there is some, they're doing what they can to recover it. Councillor Logan's?
I just wanted clarification on, um, which one was it? It's page 77, and it is 48D, and it's the one on, um, reasonable temperature and dry enough to present, prevent animals from suffering discomfort. I was just wondering why warm was taken out and reasonable was replaced.
The reason behind that is when we, um, looked at it, um, sometimes warm isn't sufficient to describe a situation, sometimes it could be that it is too hot, so a reasonable temperature would be not too hot, not too cold, and, um, that's why the word was changed. It isn't a huge change, but we felt that that was gave more, um, ability to the bylaw control officer to deal with situations where an animal might be in a pan in full sunshine and very, very warm, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Councillor Parkinson?
Um, page 20 on compensation, I was just curi- the district may pay compensation to an animal killed or injured by a dog, the owner of which is unknown. So that means for any animal that's injured or killed, the district is responsible, liable for pain?
I, I don't think it's set that simple, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have off the top of my head why that went in, but it, it is for more of an extreme situation.
Okay.
So, um, I can bring that information to an, uh, the next meeting if you wish.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, yeah, that just seemed to, um.
Any other further comments or questions from the committee? Okay, so perhaps, um, Ms. Sprinkling, do you need a motion then that the bylaw with the rec, the blacklining goes to council?
That would be, that would be perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could someone make that motion, please?
I have another question.
Okay, Councillor Parkinson?
Sorry. Um, on page 21, um, control of animals generally, this was the one where that animals can cry, howl, or bark in, or on land in the district except for land zone agricultural, so, um, shall permit or cause an animal, like, no one should cause any animal to howl or cry regardless of where it is, whether it's on agricultural land or not.
Oh, I see, that's item number 44.
I read it that way, right, like, it's okay to abuse your lan- animal on agricultural land, but not in the District of Sook. Sorry, that's how I read it, number 42.
Is that, no, is that number 44?
No, it's, um, page. Control of animals generally?
Yeah.
It's on page 21, and it's number 42.
I have it as number 44. Uh, it, under control of animals generally, no animal, no owner of an animal shall permit or cause the animal to cry, howl, bark in on, or on land in the dis- oh, I see, except land zone agriculture, if such crying, howling, or barking disturbs or is liable to disturb the, I piece.
Do I only read it that way?
Well, I kind of see Councillor.
Um, some, well, I'll use the example of dogs. They, um, are bred to have what is defined as a howl or defined as a cry and, and not defined as a bark, so they don't bark, and people will actually purchase them because they don't technically bark. So that may be just covering those other aspects, that's how I see it anyway.
But I think, um, if I may, Councillor Parkinson, is that, like, you should never cause an animal to cry regardless on the parcel of your land, right?
That's correct. It's like, it's not okay in the district, but it's okay if you have agricultural land. And it says cause, like, a person causes the animal to do this. I, I don't have pets, so, I don't know, but it just doesn't sound right to me.
I, I, just, if I'm, your worship, is just basically, um, if you think about it, the, the, uh, in the zoning bylaw, you're permitted to have a kennel, so that, I'm thinking, I know of one property, um, off West Coast Road that has a kennel, and the animals do howl a lot, and that is permitted, um, and so they're in a kennel, they don't particularly like to be there, so they're howling. I would think that would be cause, I'm, I'm certain that no one, once you get, you cross over into harming an animal, that's covered under the provincial, uh, legislation about cruelty to animals, I mean, that, of course, that would not be permitted, but I'm, I'm sure that the meaning within this bylaw is that, uh, you know, penning up an animal will cause it to, to howl often.
All right, so, um, we'll just need a mover then to move this to council, the, the, this bylaw 392 with the suggested amendments? No?
No, I'll move the motion.
Councillor Logan's is moving the motion. Did you have any comments or questions on the motion? No, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, carried, thank you. Okay, so that covers that, so that'll take us to our public input session, if anyone has any questions or comments? If you could come and state your name and address for the record? Yeah, does anyone for the second time? Just need to press the agree button, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Fran Dash, I've lived in Sook since 1979, didn't know about this.
We just need your address, please, for the.
2387 French Road North.
Okay.
And I've been here since 1979, I didn't know this was in effect, and it appears that whatever you've been talking about has already been passed.
No, that's not the case, we do have an animal control bylaw that was adopted in 2009.
Okay.
And then the zoning bylaw 500 in 2011, 613, that tightened up the number of animals, and now we're making some amendments to an existing bylaw, so it has been in place for over five years now.
Okay, um, so, one question, my number one question is, how many complaints about cats have you had? Has it been 100, 1,000, 20, 1?
Any comment from staff on that?
Um, your worship, we don't receive the cat complaints or animal complaints, they go to the, um, CRD Animal Control Office. As they come into the front office, they're forwarded on to that.
Right, because it goes through the CRD, so what has sort of brought the cat piece forward is council was looking at the exotic piece and addressing that, and also the feeding of wild animals, and then there were some members of the public that raised some concerns on cats, and then the zoning bylaw had already reduced the, or limited the number of cats, so there was some discussion that we should have our bylaws consistent with one another.
So just to be flipped, then, I don't like kids throwing garbage in my yard, can we have a bylaw about kids throwing garbage in my yard?
Well, there is, there is sort of an overall law that you can litter, so that action is not permissible anyway.
But to specify, I think cats are being specified?
Uh, is throwing garbage, I'm sorry?
No, it's, as going into people's yards.
Well, we're not looking at stopping cats from going into people's yards, we're not licensing the cats.
I, but they can be picked up by the CRD?
If there, if there's a complaint of a loose cat, or if, if, if somebody has a cat on their property that they don't want, they could call a, and call animal control and have that picked up, I mean, if, or if there were children, you could probably call the RCNP and have them picked up as well.
Yeah, kids, okay, and also, um, on the, the tags or, um, tattoos, et cetera? I have four cats that have been dumped on, in my area that I have homed. When I took them to get them spayed, it was never, that never gave me the option of a chip or a, or a tattoo. I was like, so, uh, will they be grandfathered because of this amendment?
Well, and this is just going forward to council for discussion, so it's saying may take the form of this.
Yeah, because I'm, 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 I'm a pensioner, I, I don't have the money.
Well, the main, no, I totally hear your point.
I don't have 60 bucks a cat to chip it.
What, what this does is if a cat is chipped or tattooed, it can be identified quickly, and I know that some people that have lost a cat, um, and are looking for it, at least, um, and it, it's been picked up, the animal's been hit by a vehicle, at least they know what's happened to their cat.
Yeah, but, okay, so you live in a neighborhood, I know just about everybody's dog and cat.
Yeah, well, I.
Right, so it's only people moving in that are creating a disturbance, really.
Possibly, yeah.
Like, you know, I don't like the look of your cat because it's black, I like white cats, so I'm going to phone the CRD and have it picked up because it crossed my yard.
Well, people do phone in because they don't like certain cats or animals, um, on their yard, um, we're getting recommendations that if the bear is hanging out on their yard, that you should call in that, too.
Okay, so then to, okay, so I'm allowed then, according to this byro- bylaw, I can have four Great Danes and, and four cats?
You could, yes.
On, uh, s- a, 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 a 40 by 20 lot.
If you choose, all your cats could have pet dogs, all four cats could have.
Yeah, so it's just, why couldn't I have, why couldn't I choose to have eight cats? Why couldn't, you know?
No, that's a good point.
It's eight animals, it's eight pets.
That's why we're, we're just making recommendations, and it'll go forward to council, so council will, will open up more of the discussion on it, we're just going.
Yeah, but you're still limiting me to what I can do on property that I pay you taxes for.
Okay, fair enough.
I, you don't own my property.
No, I don't.
So.
None of us do.
You're, you're, and then my taxes are going to pay CRD $76,000 a year for what? What?
For all the animal control.
What animal control?
Dogs, dog licensing, uh, there's everything from aggressive dogs, there's the court procedures, there was loose peacocks, loose turkeys, a rogue horse, uh, the exotic animal piece, all of the complaints, all of the pickups, all the court that deals with it, um, there's a number of things that they do, and council has reviewed that recently and is content with that, so that's what we pay for.
Okay, so about two weeks ago, there was a dog on Beaton Road, my neighbor phoned, my friend phoned me, she lives on Beaton Road, and she phoned me because this poor dog had been tied to a stick in the middle of the lawn for four days.
Well, hopefully she also called, um, animal control.
She called CRD, and it's, sorry madam, we can't deal with that right now.
Okay.
For $76,000 a year? No. No.
Okay, I've not heard of that, so.
So who do I, who do I, I send a written complaint to council regarding that?
You could do that, and I'll forward that on to the CRD and ask them to respond back.
Yeah, that dog was four days alone without food and water.
That, that's in the bylaw, but that's the only one to do.
Yeah, but the CRD, like, why are you wasting my money? Why are you wasting my tax, my tax money on, oh, I'm sorry, madam, we can't deal with that right now?
Well, I think every service has ways to improve, and that'll be something we'll take into consideration, but that's what we have in place right now.
Couldn't we have a, a bylaw officer, because it's a big deal, can we not have him located here? Instead of McChosen or wherever he is?
It'll be a lot more than the 76,000.
I'll do it for 76,000.
Well, like I said.
I'll do it for 40,000.
We've gone over this bylaw res- we've gone over the service agreement recently, and we've renewed it, so it's in place. And council next year will review it, that'll be an opportunity to get some feedback, we'll remember this conversation, or we can refer back to this committee, and we'll see what other incidents our staff receive, complaints, comments, feedback from the community all the time, so I would encourage your friend or your neighbor to put her comments in writing to council, we have it on record, we don't have anything thus far, and next year we'll take that into consideration and maybe, or maybe not, explore other options, but. But for now, that is what we have in place.
Okay.
Okay?
Give it. Okay, done, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from?
I need to answer to Mr., to Counsel Pearson. You say that I brought.
We'll need, just for the way the recording goes, if you could restate your name and address, please?
Margarita Dominguez, twenty seventy-five, Other Point Road. You say that I brought harshy from you. Everything that I have asked has always been a no. I have done presentation after presentation, youths, elders, everybody came here and talked to you, and everything has been a no. Which means that it has been for four years. Now, we are asking to think a little bit outside the box, not just follow, you know? Yes, there are plenty of pieces of watershed that you're never going to use. Why not using that and putting that for rent, you know, instead of just paying to clean the empty lands? Why not, you say you took, you did a referendum, well, I never saw the referendum. It would be nice that the public itself talks about this, not just because you don't like the idea, because nobody did it before, you're not going to do it. Now, this is my thing to you. You say, yeah, well, find a location, firehouse to rent, a poor society doesn't have the money to be in five acres of land. We were in the five acres of land before, but we don't have that money. And for example, when I talk to Les, or to Rick, or to whatever have a lot of properties, Moneyton, they don't want a lot of volunteers and schools coming to the property. You know, that is peaceful, that's the five acres that we can find, we cannot, they are not going to rent it to us, they are not going to rent us a piece of land. Now, can be, a bylaw can be amended, yes, it can be made, it can be, you can become popular for changing the way of things going in favor of the animals and of the people that they are suffering. Because this bylaw, as I'm saying, is a lot of people that go on the street, just pick up the animals that they are abandoned, take it home because they are broken heart. And a lot of people are like that. Which means this is just the people that want it, it's not just me, I'm just the voice. I know that I get mad, and I get mad at you, well, well, but it's okay, but you can be a little bit more flexible, too, and perhaps amend a bylaw, why not? I'm not asking a marvelous thing, I'm just asking a half of an acre. A horse pitch could have it, a horse pitch. And you're denying us, and you're going to give twelve or fifteen thousand dollars to, to build a horse pitch? Come on. You know, this is what I'm saying, that you say that that is not harsh, that is harsh. That is harshing all the elders and all the children that they have animals and that they care. Thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the public that have any other comments or questions? Okay, so then I will call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.